All right, please stand everybody. Councilman Amiho is gonna lead us in vacation, I'm gonna do the pleasure of allegiance.
All right, if you please bow your heads. Dear Lord, we thank you for this beautiful day. For saving us as, as, as a country and as a nation, we ask you, my, my almighty father, that they, that we pray together as a community and as, as a city, as a state, as a country. We pray for our first responders, we thank you for everything that they do. We thank you for the citizens of Centerville. And we ask you, almighty father, to, to be with us as we go through our, our meeting tonight and, and make some very important decisions for the city. In your name, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please have a seat, council's now in session. Want to welcome everybody tonight, thank you all so much for being here. And at this point, with the welcome, we're gonna go into public comments, is anybody here who wishes to make any public comments at the time? Okay, I don't see anybody, the hands up. Next item is old business, there is no old business. We do have a lot of new business though. Item one is adoption resolution fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, City Accountant Harrison, I believe you have that one, uh, for us. We've been going over this budget here, you know, for quite a while now, and we've, we got finalized, we presented it to everybody at the last council meeting. So tonight, you wanna say a few words with it?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, mayor and council, in your folder tonight, you'll see a resolution to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Uh, the budget is in the amount of fourteen million, one hundred fifty-three thousand, two hundred fifty-two dollars. The budget reflects the same budget that was presented at the June second public hearing, um, there have been no changes. Uh, this budget also includes, uh, six million ninety-two thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars of capital purchases, which includes construction of the fire station and completion of Centerville. So tonight, I'm seeking from Mayor and Council to adopt this year twenty twenty-one budget.
I entertain a motion at this time.
So, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the budget as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second, does anybody have any discussion on this?
I would say that, um, it has been an arduous process. Uh, we did a lot of hard work during the process, and I do wanna commend, uh, City Account Harrison and Director Bronfield for the extra work that they put in to the budget for us, so that we can be here tonight to adopt it.
Okay. All of our department heads did an outstanding job in this area too, because, uh, they all had to really cut through their budgets, so we could meet this balanced budget, as we're required to do by the state of Georgia. All right, at this point then, I'll call for your question, all favor raise your right hand. Okay, Mr. unanimous, thank you very much. The budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-one has passed.
Thank you, mayor.
Item number two is authorization signature auditor services, Nichols and Colley and Associates LLC fiscal year end, June thirtieth, twenty twenty. This was sent at the last council meeting, at this point, I will entertain a motion to adopt Nichols, all, Colley and Associates as our auditors. Something for this time period, may I have a motion second?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion on this? Okay, the, uh, the motion also includes authority for me to sign. All right, I'll call for the question, all favor raise your hand. Unanimous, thank you very much. Nichols, Colley and Associates has always done the wonderful job for us, and I'm, I feel absolutely certain it will continue doing the same thing. We've been very pleased with them over the past. All right, item number three then is the point of information expenditure tag readers police department. Councilman Wright and Police Chief Hadden.
Thank you, mayor, this is a, a budgeted expense from the previous fiscal year, this is just a point of information that we're going ahead and making this purchase, and I'll let, uh, Chief Hadden give you all the, uh, pertinent details here, this is for some, uh, additional tag readers for the police department.
Thanks, sir, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, again, this is a point of information for expenditure, this is a budgeted expenditure. We have currently one LPR license plate reader in our fleet, um, we've had it for ten so years. Uh, it's been a great product, and as you know, with technology, everything develops very, very quickly. But it is still working, um, and it's still doing its job. Uh, we budgeted this year for our second tag reader. We sourced out two of the, the separate providers for them, one of them is Madden and Associates, and their product is called the LSAG. The second one is similar to the, the one that we already have, is from Vigilance Solutions. The prices on the two, the one from Madden, which is the LSAG, is nineteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. The one that we're choosing to go with is eighteen thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars, and then for this week's budget, it just shot twenty thousand dollars for the license plate reader.
Thank you very much, I miss, uh, I appreciate that coming on the budget again. Anybody have any comments or? Councilman Wright, do you have any questions or comments?
No, sir, I apologize, mayor, we're dealing with other issues, no, I, I don't have any, um, I don't have any questions, thank you, chief, for, for putting that up for us, this is just a point of information, this was a, a, a previously budgeted item, so we're just moving forward with that purchase at this time.
Thank you very much.
I do have one question, could I make this, mayor?
Yes, sir.
So, is this an additional tag reader?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll have to net.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item here, item number four is a point of information, uh, EDA Cares Act grant funding, Councilman Wright and Director Marketing Holden.
Yeah, uh, mayor, we're gonna have a presentation here on the screen. Uh, we can watch and give us a little more information about this, and then we can, uh, have an opportunity to discuss it.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mayor and Council, just wanted to present to you guys a potential grant funding available for, um, the city of Centerville to tap into through the Economic Development Associate, or Administration. Um, they've got one point five billion dollars with their Cares Act funding, um, just to work on what COVID nineteen did to our economy.
That's for the state of Georgia, is that correct?
That, that's for the whole program, for the Economic Development Administration on the federal level.
Okay.
Um, so we're just gonna talk about the grants this evening, a possible proposal for the grant, suburban mall retrofitting ideas, and importance of being proactive in a quick summary. So, the EDA Cares Act grant is to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. There's one point five billion dollars available for municipalities. Um, EDA makes these grants to state and local government entities, and I'm, I'm hoping that we will ask for two hundred thousand dollars, possibly a little bit more, with a twenty percent ma- match in the next couple of days. This, um, the grant was kind of an open ended project and ideas to help ensure municipalities can recover economically from the COVID nineteen health crisis, I know, mayor, you and I talked about it when we sent in a TA letter to the regional commission, as they're doing some of the grant writing on this project, and you spoke about how the Middle Georgia Regional Commission also applied for this grant. So I think it's a great funding opportunity. So I'll just read a little bit about the project that we're hoping to accomplish with this, and, um, you guys let me know if you have any questions. So, I'm interested in pursuing this grant for the development of a resiliency plan for our core business district. We recognize the significant impacts that Houston County Galleria plays in our local economy, and would like to ensure they are a large portion of this resiliency plan. The entire planning process would include the town center master plan, the recently spoken about Abington and Houston Galleria, and all conceptual drawings for the Galleria Mall. Out of this grant funding, the city and its strategic partners would have a product to use to guide development in our core business district that would be utilizing unique retrofitting and redesigning strategy for the Houston County Galleria in line with our town center master plan. With our city being primarily a residential community, with twenty-one hundred of our twenty-three hundred parcels being residential, it is by the way important to ensure that with large changes in consumer behavior patterns, we're ready to pivot and prosper in the post-COVID nineteen economy. This includes the acknowledgement that Houston County Galleria will need to shift to less big box stores and more of a town center mixed-use development. What makes this planning effort different from our town center master plan and planning efforts done by mall ownership is that we're combining the public and private as stakeholders, and are doing a feasibility study element to ensure that as we plan, this is something that makes sense financially. If awarded funding, we plan on working closely with an engineering firm, regional planning commission, and market analysis firm. This would also be a comprehensive document, including any necessary policy changes for the city, like required zoning and building codes, and the development of an overlay district. I truly believe that this product, project is in line with the Economic Development Administration's Cares Act grant mission focusing on helping communities prevent, prepare for, and respond to coronavirus. Our Houston County Galleria has retailers like J.C. Penney, Bath and Body Works, Victoria's Secret, et cetera, that have been nationally closing their doors on it because they were unable to pivot after COVID nineteen. While our market has not seen any national closures, we are not out of the woods yet. Everyone on our council knows how long the Sears anchor has been available, and the many times that I've spoken about potential prospect for this site. At ninety-four thousand square feet, this space is twenty percent of the Houston County Galleria footprint. If J.C. Penney or another retailer falls in the Houston County Galleria, we would be left with even much, even more space to fill. I think this is us taking control of the narrative, just like we did with the GIC designation, so we can pivot to a more proactive approach rather than reactive. It will breathe life into this Sears anchor, and sho- ensure we are proactively insulating our tax base from drastic changes due to closures. So often municipalities develop a plan without looking on the potential per- return on investment for both private and public partners. This project will have a three-pronged approach, with feasibility side playing a vital role in the design and vice versa, and the government ensuring that our ordinances, codes, and policies support this opportunity. The grant amount we're asking for is two hundred thousand dollars with a twenty percent match. I've talked with the mall, they're willing to split that twenty percent match fifty-fifty with us in order to see this plan come to fruition. So that would be twenty thousand dollars that they're willing to put into this design strategy, along with the twenty thousand dollars we would need to put in. So just wanted to give you guys an example, and I apologize for the graphic quality. Um, but this is the North White Mall in Alpharetta, Georgia, and the redevelopment project that they're working on for their Sears anchor, and I think it could be a really great opportunity for us to follow a trend of a proactive approach to retrofitting, incorporating some green space, incorporating some public spaces for people to utilize, bringing the rooftops down into these commercial districts, making sure that we have zoning and mixed-use, um, codes that would allow for residents and commercial buildings to live in the same acreage. This is a quick example of what the mall has done before. Um, they've drawn up this design to have the Sears anchor redeveloped. So you'll see that there's a proposed new anchor there, there's some medical offices and other small retail assets in this area. Again, this is ninety-four thousand square feet, it's a huge space. There's been multiple different contacts made about wanting to bring in a fitness concept, or a recreation concept, or trying to put office space. Right now, it's listed as a call center on the state of Georgia's website, and there's, there's just so many opportunities. But what I think this really needs is the delicate touch of us sitting down with the public, with all of our stakeholders, and really looking at what this property could be, and how we can phase this in, because Belk is doing great. Belk is doing so well, it is such a stable retailer. So how can we be prepared to phase this in, so we don't sit with an eight vacant ninety-four thousand square feet for two years? And I think that a proactive approach to this type of study would be great. It was one of the things that I had budgeted, that unfortunately couldn't be factored into this next budget. But with EDA Cares Act funding, I think there's an opportunity to really be proactive. So this would take all of our previous planning efforts, including our town center master plan, the mall's planning efforts into a comprehensive study on redevelopment of our central business district to have a way to ensure resiliency at the Houston County Galleria and a feasible plan to implement. The grant amount is two hundred thousand dollars, Centerville matched twenty thousand dollars and twenty thousand dollars from the Galleria. And it's the marriage of design, feasibility, and public policy.
Excellent presentation, anybody have any comments and questions back there?
So the total grant amount is two hundred grand, and we have to match twenty thousand?
Correct. So, we looked at doing this application initially with a hundred percent funding, but after talking with both Greg, Laura, and Holly at the, um, Middle Georgia Regional Commission, it's just gonna be a much more competitive application if we have a twenty percent match incorporated into it. So I've already talked to the Galleria ownership, they're willing to put in a ten percent notch. If we're willing to put in a ten percent notch, they think this is an incredible tool for them to recapitalize the mall, make sure it's the highest and best use for contributing to our tax base.
You mean they're willing to risk twenty thousand to get, to spend two hundred thousand? Um, that's easy math. Um, you know, I, I think that this is, uh, it's certainly a good idea if this money's on the table, this is part of the, the, the Cares Act, some of the, the federal money that's coming down and trying to keep, uh, economies low. Um, yeah, I, I think that, you know, mayor, as, as anything, any steps that we can take to make this a competitive application, um, everybody wants this money, so, you know, we gotta make it sure that we, that our application shows that we can, uh, not only are, are we, you know, here to support everything that the mall is doing, and they've made tremendous, uh, strides in the last year. I, I can tell you the conversations I have where people say, well, that mall, they haven't done anything in it in years, and I said, I can tell you the chatter's out there, because it, it looks completely different on the inside and the outside. Uh, they've done murals, they've done upgrades, they've done painting from the, the, the floor to the baseboards to the skylights in there, so. They've done a good job of development, there's actually a new food vendor that opened in there last week during, during the middle of everything, that's selling gourmet popcorn, it's actually pretty good. Um, but, uh, I think it's as much as we can do to, to, um, you know, facilitate their health, and this is, you know, this is a, a, a little bit of a financial investment on our part, but it's a good, it's a good return. Anything we can do to, uh, make this application better, so I guess what I'm asking is in addition to twenty thousand dollars, is there anything else that we can do to, to make this a more, uh, appealing application, and we'll jump to the top of the pile when, when it goes in?
I think willingness to do the match for the ten percent is the biggest step that you guys can take, but also making sure that you're active during that stakeholder time period. Uh, one of the things that we really highlighted in our application was the fact that this is going to be a very public process. Councilman Amiho, I know that you really want the public involved in all of our planning efforts, and I think that there's such a great opportunity to make sure that we have a working of stakeholders with lots of public input, um, opportunities. So just being really active during the implementation of this study, I think is gonna help us tremendously, because this should help guide development and redevelopment between Margie and Houston Lake, all the way north to the town center and possibly even to the new fire station. So I think that we all have a vested interest in making sure that this plan is representative of all of our wants and needs, and if the federal government's willing to pay for it, I think that's a, that's an added bonus.
One of the positive things I see is having the regional commission, uh, being in there with us. You know, because they have a lot of pull, a lot of areas, but it shows that they have faith in what we're trying to do. Otherwise, they wouldn't involve themselves with it, and I think that's a great.
Laura reviewed our application and said that she was very confident with it, so I think that's a great opportunity to, uh, again, have some really strategic partners. I called Angie Geesley, who is the Houston County Development Authority, and just gave her courtesy to let her know that we're, we're working on this, and I foresee her being one of the stakeholders at the table for this planning opportunity, and she offered the development authorities' help if we need to implement anything that, uh, our municipality can't do, that we need some development authority, uh, privileges, then she said that she would be willing to work with us with her board.
Yeah, that's great.
When, when is the application due?
Application's on a rolling basis, we'd like to get it turned in sooner rather than later, just because we want to be part of that first couple of cycles of funding, but there wasn't a deadline on the grant.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir?
So when do you think we're gonna get it in?
I would really like to get it in by Friday this week. We've been working on the narrative section, and the narratives are good. What I need from Mayor and Council is just a letter that states that you guys are willing to match the ten percent. I'm working on getting a letter from Houston County Galleria. Um, City Accountant Harrison has written a letter just talking about the, um, financial position that the city is in right now, so I think that we're, we're set up to be able to hit that deadline.
Okay, so we really need a, a motion to have, have a letter?
Yes.
Do we? This time, you think you need a motion without a letter?
And you can, but, um, that's tough.
Can we just do it without a motion?
Sure.
Okay, can you prepare a letter for us?
Yeah, we can prepare a letter that says that you guys are willing to match ten percent. Um, Ms. Harrison and I identified some possible funding sources, we're able to save a little bit of money this year with, um, not having our Independence Day celebration, and I think that there's an opportunity for us to, um, fit it into kind of our budget constraints.
So I think if we get awarded, then we come back and, um, have Carol identify the funding source and then approve the payment of the match from that funding source.
We don't necessarily have, I'm sorry to interrupt, we don't necessarily have to make a decision on spending the money now.
Yeah, you do, you're gonna commit in the latter.
Okay, so we do.
But only if we get awarded.
Yeah, we will only spend the twenty thousand dollars if we get awarded, and we have to just say that we are willing to spend it now, much like with the DNR grant that we applied for, but required a matching element as well.
But, I mean, are we, are we gonna, are we gonna have to vote, are we gonna have to vote on that, right?
Go ahead if you're more comfortable with that.
I would be, because it doesn't involve.
Go ahead.
We need to make a motion to, that we are gonna verbally commit to doing this.
Well, I, I don't mind doing that, mayor, if we're gonna, it's, it's, it's my agenda item, that I, I move that we, uh, we commit to spending this twenty thousand dollars, I guess this would be.
A letter too.
From, and, and to, and to write in the letter as well, I'm assuming that would be on the government development budget from somewhere. Or, or, or Carol, is there a better?
We're, we're identifying later.
We can identify it later, we just.
After we've identified the budget, but I think that we, it's, it's appropriate for us to vote to say that we're, we're, you know, committing ourselves to spending this money if the grant is approved, and also, uh, you know, writing the letter, and so can we do those in one motion, or do they need to be two separate?
Yes, you're gonna, you're gonna, um, write up a letter committing to the twenty percent match should the grant be funded.
That's fine, let's just, let's just make the motion be that we will write the letter committing to the match, and then the letter can contain all the names and all. Yeah, that's from the mayor's signature, I think it's fine.
Second. Have motion second, anybody else with, any discussion on that? Okay, you have done, I'll call for a question, all favor raise your right hand. All right.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much, that was an excellent presentation. Item number five, we're all excited about that one, award ICB, uh, project fire station, Councilman Amiho and Chief Jones, please.
Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll take that one.
Okay.
Okay, so, Chief Jones coming up, um, we've been talking about this for a long time. And, and we were concerned about the cost and financing and all that stuff, and we should be concerned about all that stuff, uh, because we want to give the citizens the best value for their dollars. So we've been working on it, and we've worked on it, and I think we've come to a point where we all feel like we can move forward with this. Okay, so that's why it's on the agenda tonight. All right, Chief Jones, you have anything you wanna say before we move forward?
Uh, just like you said, Councilman Evans, uh, it's been a long process. Uh, I first speak with each one of you, I think, uh, we now are all on the same page as far as what the, what the department needs, and it's, this building that, uh, has been approved, the design has been approved by you all, is, is what we need, and, uh, it's gonna, it's gonna serve the citizens of Centerville for a very long time to come.
I agree, I agree. And, um, before I make a motion, uh, City Account Harrison, what all do you need to move forward in this motion?
Uh, in that motion, I, I guess you're just awarding.
Yeah, just to take.
Yeah, this, this is just a prior project, we go to item number six, give the other one right now.
That's fine.
This is just a reward of the project.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so that we don't hold anything up.
No, that'll be the next item.
Okay, very good, so I, I move that we award this project to ICB.
I second it. Motion second, any further discussion?
Yeah, mayor, I just, you know, I, I, um, had some strong questions about this a couple of weeks ago, and the, the question that I kept coming up with is where, where did the other two million come from? I, I could never quite get an answer on to how it went from, from four to six. And then you asked us in the meeting time, uh, you asked Councilman Anderson and myself to go and tour, uh, some of the county fire stations, and, uh, we went last week and toured, uh, two different ones, was it Station Five and Six? Is that correct? And, uh, that was great, uh, we should have done that a year ago, it would have made things, I think, a lot easier for, uh, uh, for some of us in the process, but there was a couple of things that came out of that that, that, that became clear for us. One, in part of that discussion, Mr. David Selby, who's not here tonight, also went with us, he's the architect of the project, and he said, well, you know, we had to spend that extra two million dollars on this, this underwater retention thing, and, and Cameron and I both said, hang on, what, are, what, what, what are we talking about? He said, yeah, so the EPA regulations, we have to do a retention pond, this has, we really have to be done this way, and it's just gonna cost money, and for us, that, that was the first, is the first we'd probably heard of that, and not being, um, experts in construction and not here, not knowing, because we kept asking the question, where's this extra money coming from, where's this extra money coming from, and then when he said that, you know, you go, well, you know, there's, there's your answer, you know, but I think we've been trying to sort that out for a minute and, and couldn't, uh, I think we might not have, uh, we might have moved on this a couple of weeks ago, we could have answered that question. Um, that part of it makes sense, we, we did discuss how maybe there were some, um, design things that we might could have done differently earlier in the process to maybe, um, make it be a little more affordable project, but at this point, I think we risk any redrafting might cost us as much as any money that we would save. So I, I think at this point, that the best thing we can do to move forward, but mayor, I, I think that this is something that we can discuss here, or we can discuss at a later meeting, but I think this points out to us that as we, uh, continue to grow the infrastructure of the city, that, uh, it is time, like, like so many things in the city of Centerville, we're, we're a small town, and we've done things, um, sort of on our own for years, and we've done a good job with them, but now, the, the point where we have grown, we're a little larger, we're a little more established, and, uh, that, I think, requires us, in, in many cases, to establish a more formal process for some things. I'm sure when we originally did the budget, a couple of folks sat down in the accountant's office with a pencil and a legal pad, wrote out the budget when, when, you know, this, the city was put together in nineteen fifty-eight. But as we moved on, we grew, we said, this is getting bigger, uh, we need to have a committee for this, we need to have a process, and I think as we consider, uh, building additional, uh, infrastructure projects, that, that we need to a- adopt a similar process that, um, at the mayor's discretion, that we appoint a, a, a committee made up of council members and the appropriate department heads to move forward with the project, start to finish, rather than just kind of as we did with this one, we kind of dumped a lot of it on Chief Jones, and he's done a great job with it, but that is not his primary job description, to build a fire station, he's got a lot of other responsibilities he's taking care of, so. Um, I think in the future, uh, we would better serve the city better if we had a more formal process for, uh, undertaking, uh, projects like this, but, um, seeing what we saw compared, or knowing what we're gonna have compared to what we saw built previously, um, I think we're spending the money in the right places, and I'm glad we were able to confirm that before we, uh, we voted on it tonight. So thank you, mayor, for encouraging us, uh, to go and do that, that was a, that was an excellent idea, so thank you, mayor.
Mayor, do you have some comments as well? Um, I, I still do not, um, particularly care for the number, um, and, um, I don't like to be the party pooper, but, um, that's something that I've been concerned about through this whole process, how it's, it is continually risen. Um, but, um, there are a lot of things in life that I don't particularly like, that I just have to, um, smile and raise my hand and move on, uh, which I will do tonight, uh, for this. I do agree with, uh, the comments that, um, all of us have shared, and I appreciate the councils. Um, I guess tolerance would probably be a good word for me, uh, whining and complaining about it. But, um, I did go on the tour, and, um, one of the reasons that I am raising my hand tonight, um, is I trust, um, I trust Carol, I trust the people that, um, have given us advice, uh, I trust, I trust these, these gentlemen that I've served with, uh, that we're gonna figure out, um, a very quick, as quick as possible way to pay for it, um, without, um, having any, uh, encumbrance or any injury to public service, um, along the way. Um, but I, one of the things that I do wanna say, and, um, I will be quiet and raise my hand, uh, I, I, I am thankful for the tour, and it has taught me one thing, uh, other than the fact that I still don't like the numbers, I do not wanna look back on this construction project that we are about to undertake and recredit. And if we do not do what we do tonight, we will. Thank you, mayor.
Thank y'all, thank y'all very much for looking into those projects that they had over there, the county's got some fine, uh, fine areas.
May I have some comments?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, um, there's been some discussion on social media that's been asking, uh, and questioning about the use of ICB Construction Group, and I just wanna make it perfectly clear that, uh, that uh this was a review of three general contractors who applied for this uh building contract. It was ICB Construction Group, Renfro Construction Group, and Dublin Construction Company. So, in the, and there's a matrix that comes together that tells us uh that we make a decision on which one is the one that is best suits what, what it is that we're looking for, as well as the cost. And all of the three ICB constructions uh met the categories and, and requirements and, and which now down to be the one that was best selected. So I just wanted to make it clear that there were three general contractors that applied for that, and that, and that fairly ICB Construction Group was selected, so I just wanted to, so, some people understand that.
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to respond to that, if, if that's a.
Go ahead, please.
Um, I, um, I, I don't play much into the social media, but I know that it is something that um, it, it's, it's the reality of the world that we live in, so we do have to respond to stuff like that. I've um been uh a part of a couple of projects that um ICB has completed. Uh, one very personal to me in two thousand eleven at my church, we did a ten thousand square foot renovation in addition. And um we've had zero issues, I don't know what the concern is on uh social media, I don't want to know, but currently um uh ICB is constructing our Center Park. And um just from the way that me personally, when I've walked on that property over there, the way I've been treated over there, and the way, and what I see going on over there, I'm absolutely confident that we have chosen the correct um construction company to build the fire station.
So, there's one last comment.
All right.
When you, when you're looking at building a project and you're, and you're bidding it out, you know, there's a couple of ways you can make your decision. You can go for the lowest bidder, you can go for the, the lowest price, technically acceptable application, or you can go to best value. And I think what we've done here is we've got the best value. And, and that's what we need to be doing for our citizens, and I think that's exactly what we're doing. So I'm excited about raising my head and voting for this project today also.
ICB was also the lowest bidder.
Really?
But it was a combination of price and a list of factors.
Mm-hmm.
And all things being considered the same, between them and one other, they were the low bidder as well.
They were, okay, very good.
Um, at an earlier meeting, we went over that matrix here, and we explained all three bids out to everybody publicly. So it's all been presented in the past, you know, perhaps some of the people on the social media had, you know, missed that particular one for whatever reason. We're hoping maybe uh that type of missed meeting will be prevented in the future by going on social media streamlined, streamlined like we're doing tonight. We were, we plan to keep this up, so we're gonna have meetings here, plus we're gonna you know, streamline everything, all meetings in the future. Okay? At this point, then, no further comments, I'm on call for a question, all favor, raise your right hand. All right. And we have a representative here, from ICB, thank you, sir, thank you so much, we're looking forward to that. Out of number six is approval to move forward with installment sale agreement from GMA for fire station construction. Councilman Evans, you have that one?
Yes, sir, so, so I said.
City Account Harrison.
After all the discussion that was had tonight, I, I move that we, I move forward with the installment sale agreement from GMA for the fire station construction.
My second. Have a motion in a second. We have any discussion on that in particular? We know that's gonna be a very interesting interest rate, isn't it?
Very interesting what?
Interest rate, what's it gonna be?
Well, we're hoping low.
About, hoping low, right?
Less than three percent, we're hoping.
Less than three percent.
And that was the feedback I got when I acquired.
So as soon as we do this, we'll find out what it actually will be.
Yeah, when I acquired what kind of going rate.
Well, I'm pleased to hear that, though. Okay, uh, I'll call for the motion, all favor, raise your right hand. All right, we did it. Thank you all very much on that. And out of number seven is Councilman over the Department, uh, effective July the first, twenty twenty. Now I have that, when I, and I set up, uh, I sent out to everybody what I call proposed. Uh, proposed changes to watch currently, and then what we're currently doing, and it is just that, it's proposed. So, uh, I'll entertain motions from anybody who wants, or entertain discussions first, let's do discussion. Anybody want something in particular? Or change something in particular?
My, my only question, Mayor, is that you and I spoke on the phone about this last week, and I think this is a little different than what you and I discussed, but I, I will fully admit that I've been out of pocket for the last two days, dealing with some, some church related business, but um.
Well, I believe, uh, uh, they pointed out is, and this, again, I, I like to make everybody understand this is just a proposed, so it's, it's not ingrained. Uh, I understand that, uh, Councilman Amiho, you have administration right now, currently?
Right.
Is that correct?
Yeah, yeah.
We still show you in the same position, so, um, you know, if somebody wants to uh switch out with it, I don't have any problem with that.
Well, Mr. Mayor, right now, I'm second on administration, and normally what we would do is move up.
Okay, so you want.
On those first four departments.
You wanna be on that one, then?
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll take it.
Okay. So you have that, in economic development?
Yes, sir.
Okay, does anybody else have any thoughts or comments? For everybody out there, what we have is, we have five departments here, each of them have two councilmen over. Uh, a primary councilman and a secondary councilman. Water and Sewer currently right now is Councilman Wright, is primary, Councilman Amiho is secondary. Fire Department is Councilman Amiho is primary.
Mayor, this is, yeah, this, I'm, I'm currently the primary over the Police Department. So, uh, yeah, I.
Yeah, Councilman of, of Police Department, now, the new one will be Councilman Andrews, with uh Councilman Evans is secondary. Fire Department, again, to go back to that one, Councilman Amiho will be the primary this time, Councilman Wright secondary. Admin, Councilman Evans is primary, Councilman Andrews is secondary. And Economic Development, Councilman Evans is primary, and Councilman Wright is secondary.
See, I thought we moved up, 'cause I'm over Economic Development, and you're under.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Yeah, I thought you moved up to the top of Economic Development, and then I moved off completely, which it looks like I do.
So, so.
So I think, 'cause I think, Kent, currently, currently Councilman Andrews is one of our on Economic Development.
Who was, who was on there?
Yeah, I'm currently on there three times, see, we flip flops, and now I'm on there twice, which is good for me, but.
Who was on there Economic Development before you were Councilman Andrews?
When you were.
Uh, I, I wasn't there.
It was.
I think it was you.
Yeah, no, it was, it was, I, I was, I was second when you were first on. Kate, is that?
No, Brian's been two cycles, you've been two cycles before you, since you've been on, it's been Evans, Andrews, and then.
First year, second year, third year.
So, okay, so.
Second year, third year.
Yeah, it's been three for him, and two for me, as the, as the number two slot.
So, the role back around to me this time.
You wanna swap those two roles?
What do you mean, Mayor?
Councilman Wright primary, Councilman Evans is secondary?
I don't have any problem with that.
Economic Development?
So then that means that you were on there for four Councilmen Andrews.
You were. Now, I came in as fire.
Kate, Kate, what was it, Kate, how did you do it?
You were my first year here in two thousand and seventeen, um, Councilman Andrews was, no, Councilman Wright was my second year, and then Councilman Andrews was this year, was my current councilman, so now I'm in my department.
I think I was only there for part of a year, though, 'cause I came in mid-term.
'Cause Councilman Wright serves on the housing team.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that was, I think that was the reason why I, I kept, I put him there as secondary then.
I do think that it would serve a good purpose for me to have direct supervision with Councilman Wright, just because he does sit on the housing team, but I don't have uh, either way.
Have I not been did it yet?
I'll look at your report card later. All right. Somebody tell me what you wanna do. Leave Economic Development with Evans as primary and Councilman Wright as secondary?
That would be my suggestion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay, I entertain a motion, then.
So moved.
Have a motion, I have a second.
Well, which, is Andrews gonna be a primary or a second?
No, is that, I'm gonna do that, too, now, we can talk about that.
There you, you primary on Police Department.
Uh, the, the way it works out.
I can, I can, I, well, I can be um persuaded not to be primary.
The way, the way it ends up working out is you have, the way that we have a motion on the floor, but we don't have a second, so.
Yeah, we don't have a second yet. Somebody give me a second, then we can do a discussion again.
I'll second it, Mayor.
All right, thank you.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the way, the way it typically works out every year is that two councilmen end up with three,
and three councilmen end up with two.
Right.
Um, because we have five departments in this force. Every year, every, everybody's gonna have an opportunity to have something a little different, so.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, in the past, admin, the, the councilman over administration has also been over Economic Development, and there's been two.
Hasn't been that way, I'm not sure.
Yeah. Of course, is that in that right?
That's not, because I did Water and Sewer this past year, but also did Economic Development.
Well, then, hadn't always been that way, but I know it has on occasion.
Yeah, and then, yeah, and then.
It just works out, it'll leave when there's four and not be five.
Councilman Amiho, you said something?
Yes, I think, I think that we do need to standardize the way that we're doing this, instead of sort of like just start picking a chain on who's got what. Because it's only fair to everybody to have experience in each of the different departments. Um, but I'm just sort of confused at this point now, because everything's didn't uh move around.
Well, it's typically at the mayor's discretion, and the thing is, like, like, with, like, to, to use Kate's example, I've gone through two years of, of GIC retreats, and I've done all the training on that, and that doesn't happen again, it doesn't, you don't get to go back and restart it.
No, nobody's to say that the, the councilman over the department's gonna take over that role. I mean, that's something that you've been doing, you probably would stay in that role. Would you agree, Councilman Evans?
Yeah.
It seems like if we're doing a rotation, that it's going, you're going one from, you're going from the, 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 the way that's written on here, you're going from the primary position in a department to the secondary position, or you're going from the primary to rotate into the next one?
So, when we first started this, we didn't have Economic Development. So, whoever, whoever was primary would move over one and, and down. So they would be secondary.
Okay.
And then that person who was um secondary moved up for the four departments. And, and, and that's the rotation we tried to keep, and Economic Development was some, where we just, one of us changed every year. And so that person would have two departments that they would be primary on. So, I'm saying that, that the last two years, the two, post one or post two have been over Economic Development, and unfortunately, we're not considered post four, so this year that will fall post two.
See further discussion on it? Even though we s- we set this up uh tonight, uh, at the next council meeting, I'll entertain a motion if somebody wants to, you know, wanna discuss among yourselves to change around some more, I don't have any problem with that.
I think the person who's over the Police Department shouldn't have to do any other duties in um the entire uh scheme of things.
I understand that. I understand that, that person over the Police Department is a busy man.
When does it start?
July one.
Okay. Starts July the first, which means also we, we're gonna have to do the uh appraisals.
Yes, sir.
Preach department heads.
Yes, sir.
Which will be due after the thirtieth of June. And I'd like to get those by fifteenth of July, if any, possibly. Okay, I'll call for a question, all favor of the list as is at the moment, please raise your right hand. Yeah, is that everybody?
Yeah.
All right, it's approved, thank you very much, again, like I say, I entertain a motion to, uh, in the next meeting, if y'all wanna talk among yourselves and change some things around, and uh we can also create a standardized uh method to do this, if you want to.
I do need to standardize it.
Okay. All right, we start with comments from council, post one, please.
We went out today, several of us, um, Becky, Chris, to Kate, uh, Councilman Evans, Councilman Wright, myself, and, and Mayor, and we took the um twenty-five cent tour um of Center Park, and today there was a twenty-five cent discount, so it was free. And um, and it seems to me like they're well past the fifty-five percent completion number that we've heard lately, um, and, and plugging right ahead, uh, even though they've had, I think, anywhere from thirty-eight to forty-two rain days, which has significantly inhibited progress from time to time. But if you go out there and, and drive by it, and um look and see what's going on out there, it's really starting to take shape. Uh, I will tell you this, if you haven't been out there, the property's gotten a lot smaller since we started. Um, even though it's the same size, when you stand out there and you can envision what we're gonna be doing on it in the future, it's just amazing how that thing looked really, really big, and now it looks really, really small, um, but it's gonna be a really, really neat place. So I, I encourage you to go out there, um, check out a hat from Kate, and so you'll look kinda corny when you walk on the property, but um I'm sure that um there'll be um, you, you'll appreciate going out there, but I'm looking forward to that, and it looks like um Matthews is back on the road today, you can kinda see on the north side of um Church Street, kinda where the curb and, and gutter's gonna be, so it just looks, they're starting to, to move right along, and hopefully they'll continue to speed up their process and kinda have all that kinda coincide together, we'll see how that, that works, but um, a lot of progress, it looks really, really good. Go check it out.
Okay, post two.
Uh, the only thing we can clear up tonight is, Mayor, is there was one thing that was said at this meeting that was just not truthful, and Councilman Andrews said that he does not love being the party pooper, and that is false.
I don't rat him out like that.
He lives to be the party pooper, he's a middle school principal, his job description is be the party pooper, that is, that is what he does.
Still loaded for it, though.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, post three.
Boy, am I enthusiastic, can't you tell? I am excited, though, really, we were out there in the park, and things are really moving along, and then you drive down Church Street, and dirt is moving, and like our Councilman Andrews said, looks like curbs and gutters are gonna come in, or, or whatever you call those things on the side of the street, you know, where the water runs. And um, so um, you know, we undertook this, it's, it's not as far as we would've liked because of the rain days and other issues, but it's moving along, and it's gonna be done soon, and there're gonna be so many happy people. Not just because it's a new street, but because it's not torn up anymore, but uh, but that's great, and I am proud to be on, on this city council, and I am excited to be living in the city of Centerville where all these good things are going on. Remember, Center Park is not just a park, it's a destination, people are gonna come to Center Park, come to Centerville because they're coming to Center Park, not because they just happened to see it, so I'm excited about that.
Thank you, post four.
So, uh, big kudos to the Budget Committee, and other uh, you, Mayor, and my, uh, Councilman Evans, and Carol, and all the department heads. Uh, really put their hands together, try to uh hammer out a, a very good executable budget, and so I appreciate it, and uh and I know that so is the, my other co-council members. This coming Saturday, the Lions Club is going. This coming Saturday, the Lions Club is going to be, uh, having, uh, nineteen hundred food boxes, they're gonna be given away to anybody who comes. Uh, it starts at eleven o'clock, and lasts till the boxes, all the boxes are out, and they're free food boxes, we encourage anybody and everyone who would like to, uh, have a free food box, certainly come, no one will be turned away. We are also looking for volunteers, anybody who's, uh, who can come out and assist, uh, we certainly encourage it, uh, 'cause they're gonna need all the help they can to try to keep the, the flow going. This coming Saturday is the farmer's market, I encourage all of you who are gonna be out, uh, to certainly come on by here at City Hall and enjoy, uh, the farmer's market. We're trying to do as best as we can with social distancing, as well as, uh, as having the park, uh, getting built up and so forth, so, come on and enjoy it, I know, I, I u- I usually come every time it, uh, they do activities here, they're a lot of fun. Are they doing movies in the, in the park?
We're not considering any other events until, in, we get into July.
Okay, good.
And then we'll post on Facebook.
But, yeah, but I'll tell you, it's a lot of fun, and, uh, it's interesting, last time they had the farmer's market, I stopped by myself, picked up a whole bunch of jams and some really great, uh, products, I certainly encourage you to come out and, uh, park at home, and, and that's all I have.
Thank you very much, you, you're right about the farmer's market, I had to go out there and get my shrimp.
Okay.
Yeah, and, uh, got hunters last time, I usually get jam, my wife gets some vegetables, but it's, it's all, uh, wonderful place to go to. One last thing, I want to just talk about the census again. The census is so important to us out there, Centerville, believe it or not, is number one, uh, in Houston County. Uh, matter of fact, I think we're number one in the, uh, middle Georgia region right now, uh, followed by the other cities here in Houston County. But we need to stay up there, we still haven't re- reached our goal yet, we need to get as many people to fill out the census and get it turned in as we possibly can. 'Cause it means a difference for our federal funding, our state funding, it all comes through that, so we need it out there, please go do that. And the last thing, of course, is everyone stay safe out there, this COVID-nineteen's not over with yet, we're still seeing increases around. Um, Houston County's doing better, a lot of other areas, but it's all because we have good citizens here. Thank y'all very much, and have a great evening.